Good evening. I'd like to call to order the December 3 reorganization meeting of the Math Act and School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge.
(inaudible)
By way of announcements, so public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcast. For attendance, we have all board members present here this evening. And we have two separate meetings tonight. Our first meeting is the reorganization of the board that happens every year. So at this time, I'll take any public comment on the agenda items for the reorganization. Dr. Malik?
Jim Malik-Worcester. Are we going to know who's getting nominated for president before we make our comments?
That's, as far as I know, has never been part of the proceedings.
Well, under Section 903 of your board policy, you can do that. Are you aware of that? So wouldn't it be common sense to let us know who you're going to nominate for president before we make our comments about who you're going to nominate? So that we could give our input? Or do I have to guess?
I can't speak for the rest of the board, so I don't know who is going to be nominated definitively.
Well, you make up the agenda with the superintendent, right? So wouldn't it be common sense to, you know, make that modification, which you're allowed to do, so that I can make my comment after you make your motion? So I'm not guessing who it is? Yeah, there's no requirement, but it's allowed. You can do it.
Understood.
Okay, so I'll guess.
Yeah.
I'll guess that you're going to get nominated for president. So I'll make my comments as if I make the right guess, which makes no sense. I oppose your nomination. I'm guessing that you're going to be nominated. So I'm going to oppose my hypothetical guess. And I'm going to oppose it because you're the person that called me disgusting for asking a question about Mr. Ryan's citation for public drunkenness. And he still made you president after doing that. You're the person that repeatedly violated board policy 903 for almost the majority of your term, even when you knew it was wrong. Then you changed board policy 903. You're the person that repeatedly violated board policy 006, even after I told you, you know, what the story was. You're the person who violated board policy 002 when it came to your authority. You know, will of the board, which really doesn't exist. There's no will of the board. So I guess my point is that we need a board president who tolerates an independent board thought. We can't have a bunch of lemmings up there who just follow you. Because you came down hard on the board when they disagreed with you that one night. You know, they wanted to let Mr. Bickelman speak, and you finally, you know, let them have their say, let him speak. But then the following meeting, you came down hard on the board for disagreeing with you. Well, you don't want a bunch of lemmings sitting up there, because that makes you a dictator. We can't have a dictator as a board president, because that leads to tyranny. I've already seen a bunch of dictators. We had John Harrison Worcester. We had Jim Van Horn here. And it always ends bad. Always. So my advice to this board is do not put a dictator as president. Thanks.
Thank you for sharing your opinions. Is there any other public comment on the agenda items for the reorganization? Seeing none, do I have any nominations for a temporary president this evening?
I nominate.
I nominate Mary Hall. Do we have a second? Oh, we don't need a second. Okay. Are there any other nominations? I'd like to nominate Paul Winters. Are there any others? Okay, can I have a motion to close nominations? Okay, is there a second? Mr. Navarrette, thank you. One second. All right, do we have any comments from the board regarding these nominations?
I'd be happy with Mr. Winters. It's, um, I'm, just so you know, so it doesn't really matter to me. I just know somebody needs to elect the procedure, so whoever's more, not elect the, be comfortable with the procedure, so, just FYI.
I, I don't know, can I defer my nomination, or what would be?
We take that as a deferment.
Understood. Okay, if there's no other comments, then I'll say all in favor of Mary Hall as temporary president. All opposed? Okay, so that would be one to eight, and the motion does not carry. All in favor of Paul Winters as the temporary president. Okay, and that's nine zero, so the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Winters.
Okay, is there any nominations for president? Would someone like to make a nomination?
I would like to nominate Kim Aubrey Larsonis.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other nominations? Okay. I'll ask for a motion to close the nominations for president. Mr. Ryan, Ms. Hall. Second the motion? Questions or comments from the board?
I would just like to say I nominated Kim due to her outstanding job over the last year. She's committed her time. She's extremely organized. She devotes time, energy, great thought. She's extremely organized, and I appreciate the last year that she spent, and I feel that the consistency of her doing a second year would be beneficial. In response to the gentleman who's opposed and called us lemmings, I would just like to thank the member of the public. I read all 100-plus feedback we received about the November 8 meeting, and I want to thank the woman who gave her input and also felt that, apologized from, she felt that some of us, that some members of the public spoke to us in an appalling manner, and I really wanted to thank that woman for taking the time to say that. And it's my privilege and my honor to nominate Kim.
Okay, any other comments?
I have.
Yeah, I agree with what Andrea said there. I think Kim has done an excellent job in her one year as president, and I'm looking forward to seeing her as the president for the year to come. And in regards to about guessing who's going to be president, who's not going to be president, if we had put the name on the agenda of, you know, who we thought might be president, I'm sure we'd be accused of a sunshine law violation that we discussed ahead of time. So either way we did this, we would have had the same type of comment, so I wouldn't worry about it.
Ms. Drummond?
I just want to say as vice president over the past year, and I've been working closely with Kim, and I heartily agree with her nomination for president.
Hall?
I just want to echo what everyone's saying. I think Kim has done an excellent job this year. She's very organized and also always available when I have questions about things that are arising. So I appreciate the time she's invested, and I think she will continue to do an excellent job if voted in.
Okay. Since we have one nomination on the table, I guess we go to voting at this point. So all those in favor of Kim Aubrey Larsonis, I think we should do a roll call on this. So starting with Ms. Reese.
Yes.
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 Kim Aubrey Larsonis will take over the president for a term of one year. Thank you, Mr. Winters. Congratulations.
All right. At this point, would someone like to make a nomination for vice president? And I'm going to jump right in, and I'm going to nominate Liz Drummond as vice president. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close the nominations? Ms. Reese, and a second, Ms. Can Crowe. Any comments from the board? Okay, well, I will also say that having worked with Liz Drummond for the past year very closely, I have felt completely and totally supported in having her work in close partnership with myself and with Dr. Zerby, and I feel like we're much more of a team than a president and vice president. So I'm honored to have her returning as vice president this year. Can I have a vote, then? All those in favor of Liz Drummond continuing as vice president? And the motion carries, nine zero. Okay, at this point, we're going to take nominations for our representatives to the North Monco Technical Career Center Joint Operating Committee. Do we have any nominations for those positions?
There's two.
And there are two of them. Mr. Winters?
Ms. Reese and Ms. Drummond?
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close the nominations? Mr. Winters? Mr. Ryan is a second. Any comments from the board on this?
Nothing other than I truly enjoy my time at the North Monco Technical Career Center. It's one of my favorite parts of being on the board. I am also their secretary, so it would be helpful for them if I stayed in that position.
I also am really enjoying my time with the North Monco Technical Career Center with Andrea, so thank you for your nomination again.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of Andrea Reese and Liz Drummond as our representatives to North Monco Technical Career Center Joint Operating Committee? The motion carries, nine zero. And that completes all of the items on the reorganization agenda. Do we have any other comments or questions from the board members on this at this point? Okay, at this point, I will open it up to courtesy of the floor. Dr. Malik?
Jim Malik-Worcester again. Mr. Ryan, I think, should listen when members of the public speak. Nobody said anything about putting it on the agenda. Read your board policy, 903, and read the sunshine law. It allows you to do one of two things, either all comments at the beginning of the meeting or after the motion. Nobody said anything, put it on the agenda. So, you know, I think you need to listen when people speak. Under tonight's agenda, Dr. Zerby has, under other, number 13, the Arrowhead property timeline, and you write down, "The superintendent will present a recommendation on a timeline for the board to consider with respects to the Arrowhead Elementary School project." But that's all you have. But somehow, I know more than that. You have other things planned for tonight, don't you? Other than that? Because Mr. Navarrette, apparently, is putting stuff out on the internet that you're going to put something out there where you're going to present a modified timeline for the first major decision regarding Arrowhead, whether to terminate discussions about closure or move to official hearings on closure and consolidation. Is that true?
Those were my words, not his.
That's true. But he said that he told the board that over the weekend. Is that true?
His comment was, as he stated, that they were going to put forth a timeline, and the first decision that needs to be made is whether or not we are going to move ahead with a closure decision or not.
Right, he told that to the board over the weekend, and you told it to a whole bunch of people over the internet.
At this point, Dr. Malik, I'm going to ask that you continue to direct your comments to me as the presiding officer.
Well, he decided to speak. I just want to know how a certain group of people get information that the regular public is not privy to. Maybe you can tell me that. Anybody want to tell me?
As elected officials, we are privy to information from the superintendent.
Oh, I got it. But how do another group of people, to save our school people, get more information than the regular public? Want to tell me that one? No?
That was not an official action of the board. That's all I can say.
Well, I don't think that's really fair to the rest of the public, for them to be more informed than the general public about what's going on. See, the whole Arrowhead project's political, as I keep saying over and over again. They have more information than the rest of the public. To date, we've had no discussions about closure and consolidation. We've not been presented with any scenarios about closure. So I don't know what he's talking about doing tonight. We've been not, not been presented with any analysis of classroom utilization, capacity, core facilities, program utilization, cost and benefit. Ms. Drummond asked for that. So did Mr. Earnshaw. So did Mr. Winters at the special meeting. But he's going to talk about possibly, you know, bagging the whole thing tonight? Something's not right. Your M&amp;M study is flawed. They didn't even come down and give their talk, and he's going to talk about bagging it tonight? I gave you this from their study. Even more of a problem. If you look at their multipliers on page 18, the multiplier for single-family attached for Worcesters, .32, but for Lower Providence, it's .6. And no explanation, it's twice as much.
Dr. Malik, I need you to wrap up now.
I will, I will. No explanation. That's an error of almost 50 homes to your, you were talking about, oh, you know, there's going to be a lot of kids coming. Well, that's an error of 50 students. So don't, I would not talk about getting rid of the option tonight.
Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Mr. Andrews?
Good evening. Johnny Andrews, Lower Providence. I have to say what Dr. Malik put together as a presentation has a lot of logic and intelligence to it, so I commend him for his skills at speaking to some of the issues. But I came to the podium at this time to, again, speak to the Malone and McBroom's 2018 enrollment projections, flawed for two reasons. One, their birth projections are fake, and thus they put their student enrollment projections into some kind of fiction. Their birth projections are fake in that they fail to fit close to the actual trend. Births have been going down. In 2017, the births in the district were 262. And then M&amp;M, starting this year and going forward for the next five years that are relevant to the projections, they have something like 320 births each year. And their fake births are tied to a regression analysis equation that they developed that has a non-logical response to the unemployment rate, and they can't defend the housing sales data that they claim, that those are the two factors that go into the, into the equation. In contrast, I developed a similar birth regression formula for the last five years of housing sales and unemployment rate. It shows a reasonable relationship of increasing housing sales and slightly increasing births. In other words, the births, according to my regression analysis, are still in the neighborhood of 260 to 270 a year, quite a bit lower than 320. And the constant in that equation matches the births that are in apartments. And apartments aren't, buying and selling of apartments don't affect births. And also, my equation shows that when the unemployment rate goes up, it's the births in the apartments, not the births in the homes, that go up. And also, the second problem with their projections is they seem to overestimate the annual K-4 enrollment increases over the much, much of the next decade, as 179 per year, due to a lot of new homes. Some people say 500. I estimate only 35 to 45 per year from those new homes, and because they are upscale town homes or move-up homes, and those homes don't populate the lower elementary grades. I do show a lot of enrollment growth that is due to home resales. And the difference is that the home resales are oftentimes homes that young families move into, and then when they move into those homes, they bring children or they have children in those homes that populate the lower elementary grades.
So, Mr. Andrews, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up now.
Yes, I'm just about finished. So I think that with the problems with the M&amp;M enrollment projections study that was done on a shoestring this year, we need to look at alternative projections as part of an overall study of the Arrowhead project. Thank you.
Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Mr. Bickelman?
Joe Bickelman from Audubon. Nice job, Mr. Andrews. Hopefully, you all took some quiet time at home as a board and read Mr. Andrews' analysis of enrollment projections and what's wrong with Malone and McBroom's report. I'd just like to talk about, I think you should close Arrowhead for these reasons. Skyview was built, we didn't need it. $40 million of debt was put on the backs of the taxpayers. You should not compound that by borrowing $25 million to rebuild Arrowhead. You should close Arrowhead, save $1 million a year in operational costs, and not spend $25 million. That would be, it would be put on the backs of the taxpayers as debt to the district. $40 million is already there from Skyview. Skyview was built based on projections of 6,500 kids. We have 4,800 kids right now. I hear talk about, there's no way we can operate with three elementary schools if we close Arrowhead. I got news for you. There will be four elementary schools. Eagleville, Worcester, Woodland, and Skyview. There's a remaining four elementary schools. I suggest you take the sixth grade from Skyview and put it in Arcola. Arcola has had 1,400 kids in that school in '06, '07. They have 788 kids in that school right now. They surely can handle a sixth grade of 388. Enrollment trends are down. You heard Mr. Andrews, 260. Malone McBroom put 320 in their estimates. You always have a five-year lead time on birth rates. You can see something coming down the pike to build the school. You'll have two empty lots, Audubon and Arrowhead. They'll be there for expansion if you need it, but you won't need it for a couple of No one in this community, the 70 or 80 percent that don't have kids in this, in these schools, they do not have a printed document in their hand from the school district to let them know what the capital projects are in this district. We're going to borrow $10 million for the next eight years for capital projects. The public with kids not in the school district don't know about that. You ever get something from your Lower Providence township? You know everything that's going on in that township. The public cannot go to their mailbox and open up a newsletter from the district that shows all the capital projects for the kids, for the parents, for the people in the community that don't have kids in the school. They don't know about what's going on here. That's $80 million in projects. They don't know about it. The biggest bill they pay in taxes is for the school district. The only thing we get in the mail, like I said the other day, is a tax bill and glossy flyers for elections to the board of school directors. That's the only thing people without kids in the school get, a tax bill and glossy election flyers. Let them know what's going on here, and you have plenty of room. Don't compound the problem that you have, and you have four elementary schools if you close Arrowhead.
Thank you, Mr. Bickelman. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Yes.
Kelly Arne, Lower Providence. Is this the appropriate time to discuss regular meeting items, or should I wait until during the regular meeting for that?
It's entirely up to you. The courtesy of the floor is your four minutes to talk about any matters that are of relevance to the district. You can wait until the regular meeting. You can speak now. It's up to you.
Okay, I'll just speak now then.
Okay.
Thank you. Arne, A-R-N-O-N-E. Yep. To begin, I would like to express my concern with how the agenda for this evening was updated a short time ago. It's my understanding that an agenda was published several days ago. was published several days ago and then updated last night. On the Agenda Manager Home tab, it states that all meeting agendas will be available to view approximately 72 hours prior to the start of a meeting with no note of if changes are possible after that time. Going into the actual agenda, there's no notation or timestamp of the last update, nor is there any indication that a change has been made on the School Board's website. Had someone read the agenda when it was first published for this meeting, they would have no way of knowing that a change had been made. This is not about Arrowhead. This is about an issue for any topic that's added to an agenda without public knowledge. I truly hope it's not the Board's policy to make changes like that without any kind of amendment noted. If a change is unavoidable, I understand that happens, the public should be made aware that a change has been made. The Board, you guys are constantly reminded of the mistakes of past Boards, and people harp on you about it constantly. It's not your fault. You're not to blame for past errors. However, making those last-minute changes regarding any topic without informing the public does not lend itself to the transparency that should exist between the Board and the public. I would urge you to be more forthcoming when changes are made in the future and proactively let the public know about that. On another note, just with the Arrowhead issues, as a parent, taxpayer, educator, I believe it'd be an enormous mistake to close another school in this district. I've previously spoken at the November 8th meeting about the unique family environment that exists at Arrowhead and the excellent educational experience my children have had there. However, this evening, my concern lies more in how the entire community, both with its children in the school and not in the school, would be affected by a closure. Lower Providence comprises a large portion of Methacton School District. It's primarily residential. It's not known for having a large commercial tax base or a surplus of successful businesses. If anything, most businesses in this district or many businesses in this district, it's a revolving door of opening and closing a short time later. Many of the residents in this township leave the township and the school district for their day-to-day shopping and needs, go to Collegeville, Oaks, other surrounding areas. Yet the home prices remain steady and relatively high here, and it continues to be a highly sought-after area to live in. The schools carry this township. People are not moving here for the commerce. The excellent education that the students receive drives this area. Closing another elementary school will lead to already congested classrooms and buildings becoming even more overcrowded. As was clearly demonstrated in Dr. Zerby's presentation on November 8th, there is very little to no homeroom space left remaining in the district with only two openings possible at Skyview. Simply put, there's nowhere to put these children if we close Arrowhead. Countless studies have been conducted over the years linking smaller class sizes to higher levels of academic achievement. Should Arrowhead close, an increase in class size will be inevitable to the further detriment of our students and their education. I'm aware of the possible alternatives that Dr. Zerby gave. He mentioned on November 8th from the grade configurations from January of 2017 prior to the close of Audubon. I know they're no longer necessarily possible. However, I have particular concern with the idea of placing eighth graders in the high school. It's not developmentally appropriate particularly in a large school to have 13-year-olds with 18-year-olds in a high school setting. Intellectually, socially, and emotionally, eighth graders and 12th graders are in completely different places. It's not developmentally appropriate. If this option is still being considered, please take into account and do the necessary research to see how this would be an irresponsible decision. Finally, looking at the Malone and McBroom report from September of 2018, when taking into consideration the pipeline, they indicate an elementary enrollment spike over the next 10 years. The report also indicates a decline over the next 10 years for grades 6 through 12. However, it fails to go beyond the decade mark and evaluate the increase the upper grades will see when those elementary students reach grade 6 and beyond. The overcrowding that will result directly from an Arrowhead closure will affect far more than just the elementary schools. Over time, grades 6 through 12 are certain to feel the effects as well. Closing another school will be a disservice to this community on many levels. Not only do we jeopardize the education of the students, but the taxpayers' home values as well. A declining district will make this area less appealing to homebuyers and will significantly affect even those without children in the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arne. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn then? Ms. Reese and a second, Ms. Drummond. Meeting adjourned.
Call to order, December 3rd, meeting of the School Board. Hit the cabbal and lead us in approach.
I call to order, December 3rd, 2018, School Board meeting. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge the flag to the flag, the United States of America, and to the flag for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'd like to formally welcome everyone to the School Board meeting, and I'd like to thank the School Board for giving myself and Quentin the privilege of being here tonight. So, thank you.
We are proud to bring you some news from Arcola. Congratulations to Mrs. Caroline Dyinger and Mrs. Abby Hollenbach on being chosen as the Methacton Staff Award for Excellence at Arcola.
It's winter concert season. The Select Chorus is performing at the Audubon Tree Lighting Ceremony on December 7th. They will also be spreading cheer with performances at the local nursing homes on December 20th. The String Ensemble will be lighting up faces with music during their performance at the King of Prussia Mall on December 14th. Finally, all of Arcola music ensembles and students will be performing their winter school assembly and night concert on December 11th.
Congratulations on Arcola Science Fair winners as they move on to the next round.
We had a successful fall sports season and first marking period. Onto winter season and marking period two.
Wishing everyone a terrific holiday season. Hashtag be kind.
I'll keep my jersey myself.
Good job, good job.
Okay, by way of announcements, the public is still hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting, and by way of attendance, we still have all nine of us here. Recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we have one scheduled guest. We have Dr. Amy Mangano. Although she moved her seat, so I couldn't find her. Dr. Mangano is principal at Arcola Intermediate School, and she is here this evening to recognize two very important people. We honor on a monthly basis staff members that go above and beyond for our students, staff, and community. And this evening, Dr. Mangano is here to help us recognize two very important individuals. Dr. Mangano?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby, and thank you to the School Board for having us here this evening. I probably couldn't have said it better than our own students who already announced two of the names here tonight, but very proud to be representing the school and the school district, and just what a pleasure it is to be here. So tonight, I do have two staff members here that we're very proud of. I'd like to bring them up front, if that's okay. We have Ms. Caroline Dyinger, who is in our main office every morning, and honestly, she has never had a bad day, and even if she did, you'd never know. So she is here this evening, as well as Mrs. Abby Hollenbach, who is at Arcola this year as our math/gifted specialist. Again, truly a pleasure to work with both of these fine young women. Please come on down.
Thank you so much for everything you do for us. We really appreciate it. If we could, we'd ask you to please allow the Board to extend some thank you as well. So if you want to just make your way along around the table, we'll do that, and then we'll grab a picture at the end. Congratulations.
Thank you again.
That ends the recognition of guests and scheduled speakers.
All right, I understand there's something on TV tonight that some people want to get home for, so I'm going to do my best to keep us moving. Under reports, we do not have any Board Committee reports. Mr. Ryan, we don't have anything from the IU, is that correct? Okay. But we do, as I understand, have our Student Board representatives here to give a report, so I'll turn it over to you guys.
Okay, so at Methacton, the current events happening this December include, in theater, well, actually, last November, the Christmas Carol, the play was played. The Methacton Theater is also doing a dine and donate at Eagleville Tavern, if anybody's looking forward to that. In robotics, Team 9156B qualified to the PA State Championships through their High Robotics Skill Challenge score at the competition held at Great Valley High School this Saturday. For colleges, recently, 10 student athletes competed their college signing day. And club events at Methacton include the Habitat for Humanity Gingerbread House Building, the Mini-Thon Kids Night Out at the Methacton Gyms, the wrestling team dine and donate also at the Eagleville Tavern, and other events include the private and parochial school visitation at Methacton High School and Keystone Testings.
Methacton will host the winter concert on December 19th at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. The concert will feature performances from the band and string orchestra. Next, Methacton's multicultural club will be selling homemade candles during lunches and in the counseling offices on Tuesdays and Thursdays through December 21st. The candles are four ounces or eight ounces and are made of all-natural soy wax and a wide variety of fragrance oils. All proceeds will be donated to Cecil and Grace Bean Soup Kitchen and to Aklema Family Center in Norristown to benefit low-income families. Lastly, on December 4th, new members will be inducted into the Tri-M Music Honor Society. Tri-M Music Honor Society focuses on preparing for performances, along with the helping out throughout the Methacton music community.
Thank you. We do not have a report from the Education Foundation this evening, so I'll turn it to Dr. Zerby for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, I have two items. First, I want to bring the attention of the Board to the budget calendar. Please know that we'll be meeting on January 9th with the Finance Committee to review the proposed 2019-2020 budget, and then we'll be meeting with you on the 15th of January for a full Board review of that draft proposal. And then that will start the process for the budget season, as we call it and as the timeline suggests. Other than that, I really want to, since this is the last meeting of the Board for this calendar year, I just want to extend to everyone in the public, as well as here at the Board, wish you a very joyous holiday season and a happy new year. So enjoy. Thank you. That ends my report.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. At this time, is there any public comment on Board action items for this evening? Dr. Malik?
I'd like to comment on, I'd like to comment on 13D, if I could. I'd like to go back to this update that was sent out by Mr. Navarette, that Dr. Zerby informed the Board this weekend that he will present a modified timeline for the first major decision regarding Arrowhead, whether to terminate discussions about closure or move to official hearings on closure and consolidation. Maybe you can, maybe you can explain to me how this whole thing works, how a certain segment of the population gets that information, and then the public doesn't get that information. Can you explain that to me?
As I stated earlier, that was not an action of the Board.
Well, did you get that information? Or was that just Mr. Navarette that got the information? Did Dr. Zerby send that to the entire Board, or just Mr. Navarette?
Dr. Zerby sent a note, excuse me, that the timeline would be added to the agenda. I thought it was important that the public be aware that it was going to be a topic of discussion tonight, particularly after last week, when we had another member of the public comment that they didn't know when these things were going to be on the agenda, that it wasn't clear. I subsequently sent a note to Dr. Zerby and asked him to make sure that it was added to the agenda and that it was clear. And then I posted it on Facebook to make sure that people were aware.
Well, this wasn't on the, this wasn't on the public website, whether to terminate discussions about closure or move to official hearings or on closure and consolidation?
That's right, because those postings are my own.
Right. Well, that's, that's different information than we got.
Dr. Malik, that information is from Mr. Navarette and Mr. Navarette alone.
Yeah, did, did you get that information?
No, the information that was shared with the Board was exactly what's on the agenda this evening.
So this is different information. This is different than-
Yes, this is your time, Dr. Malik. I'm trying not to waste it.
Well, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to figure out what's the accurate information.
You have the agenda in front of you. That's the accurate information. Let's move on.
Well, let's move on. So, am I to consider this information to be inaccurate that was given by Mr. Navarette, or is this accurate information? Or is this political information? Can you tell me that?
Again, I'm not speaking for the Board.
Because is this how, is this, is this how things are done at the Board level? Is this how you're going to politicize the process? You know, I just don't understand how it works. Now, as far as this, whatever you're doing with the Arrowhead property timeline, you know, are you going to provide any kind of a analysis of all three of your options to the public? Meaning, are you going to satisfy Ms. Drummond's desire to get a classroom analysis and Mr. Earnshaw's before you go make any decisions? Because they asked for it at the special meeting. This Mr. Winters did, too. Are you going to do any core facility analysis? Are you going to do any cost-benefit analysis? Are you going to come up with any kind of a, you know, plan as to what it'll look like if you do a closure and realignment, what that would actually look like, how it would go, how it would proceed, so the public could look at it compared to a, you know, a new building versus a renovation? Or are you just going to just, you know, do away with the option altogether without even looking at the facts? There's been no discussion on closure and realignment- There's been no discussion on closure and realignment of any kind. There's been no facts provided. There's been no research done. How do you guys intend to do it? I'm not sure I understand how you're doing it. Is there a plan of any kind? Are you going to help Ms. Drummond out at least and get her the information and get Mr. Earnshaw the information? Or is this like a witch, you know, this Salem witch hunts here that we do? You know, just say that closure and realignment's a witch. Let's burn it. I mean, is that how you're doing it here? Yeah, Lemmings is right. I mean, you really want me to go to the outside agency? Because I have a lot. You guys have given me more than enough. I have more than enough.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you're getting at there, Dr. Malik.
I have more than enough.
More than enough?
More than enough to proceed to an outside agency.
I'm not sure what you mean by an outside agency.
Somebody else to look at this with a fresh look.
Again, I'm not sure where you're going with this.
I know where I'm going with it. It doesn't matter whether you know where I'm going with it, I know where I'm going with it.
Well, I thought that the whole reason you were standing at the podium was to share comments with us, but if I don't know what you're saying, then I can't help you.
I've just asked you a bunch of questions.
Okay, and I'm going to tell you that you're at the four-minute mark now, so I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
You've given me no answers.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
You have a board member up front who's asked you for classroom analysis.
Dr. Malik, your time is up.
And you can't give me that answer.
Your time is up.
You can't even give your own board member information. That's more than enough for me.
As I believe I've stated previously, our process through this is going to be just that, a process. There's going to be discussion, there's going to be a lot of discussion. It's not going to be a one-decision-one-vote thing. It's going to take some time and there's going to be a lot of information coming and being considered as part of that process. Is there anyone else that has public comment on board action items this evening?
I'd like to, Joe Bickelman from Audubon, I'd like to speak to item number eight. In particular, the minutes of November 27th. I would like to thank Kelly Arnon, I believe, for bringing this out. And I meant to talk about it first, but I wanted to get my point across when I spoke at the first courtesy of the floor. I printed out version number one of the agenda and I printed out the minutes of November 27th, the voting meeting. Because I was going to speak about the minutes, because I didn't like what was printed in there about what I said. Because you couldn't tell what side of defense I was on with any of the topics. So I printed it out, the agenda, and I printed out the minutes. So I go there today, okay? And the agendas changed from the posted agenda that I printed out. And the minutes were changed that I was going to speak to, because I had a compliment in there about Andrea Reese's minutes from her committee meeting. And it said in there that I complimented her with what she did there. But if you look at the minutes for version 2.3 or whatever it is, the minutes are changed and just said I, it just says Andrea Reese about, I spoke about that. And Dr. Kochenauer, I spoke about that, too. So there was agenda posted, there was minutes posted. They changed and a new agenda was posted and new minutes were posted for November 27th. That's what the public saw, that's what I saw. Okay? Then the other night, my wife sitting on the couch, and it must have been about nine o'clock, I guess it was, what night was it? Sunday night, I guess last night, right? Right? And I saw this thing from Mr. Navarette saying that there's going to be this move to vote on discontinuing the closure discussion. And I says, "No, you're kidding me." You know, that can't be. And I had to look at it a couple times. I said, "You know, that really is something." So those are two items, you know, I don't know who's running the show here, but I do. What you should do is get all the minutes together. Somebody puts the minutes together, they circulate it to the board, and they give a deadline about when the, anything that you have concerned about it. And, you know, you make the changes, circulate them again and see that everything's right. The board members say, "Okay, everything's cool." And you post those agendas, those minutes, okay? A simple, simple process. The other thing, you know, there were requests for utilization numbers for these rooms, and I think you should get those. And I think you should have an independent person verify the numbers, okay? Because you don't know what you're going to get, you know? You're going to get numbers. I always hear about the eight rooms that were taken away from Arcola when they built Skyview. That shouldn't even be an issue, because Skyview's right next door, it's a little bit of drywall to get to those eight rooms, because Skyview isn't filled. So you'll have room when you close Arrowhead and save $25 million and $1 million in operational things, operational every year, $1 million you'll save. And you can use that for curriculum improvement and implementing programs and things like that. Andrea Reese, you brought up the fact that somebody from the public said that some, you had a submission that said, "We spoke badly." You don't need to bring that up unless you're going to come with a name, okay, of that person, or that person can show up, okay? You don't have to bring that hearsay. The other thing is, I just want to let the public know that I've been coming to the board meetings for four and a half years. I might have missed one. And that I've attended finance committee meetings, HR committee meetings, when there was an HR committee, and buildings and grounds committees, facilities committees, transportation committee meetings. So I've been here for four and a half years. And Audubon was closed, and that was a family school. A lot of good things happened there. People moved into that Audubon, because there was a good neighborhood school there. The teachers, the parents, everybody participated in that school. It was like a family there at Audubon, okay? I know, because I bought the first presidential plaque with Mr. Rinker, had my family's name put on it. We were on the George Washington plaque of all the presidents. I was the first one on the plaque with the principal, Mr. Rinker, for Audubon Elementary School. It was such a cohesive unit there between parents, teachers, kids. It was a family school. A lot of good things got done there.
Is there anyone else for public comment on board action items this evening? May I have a motion to approve the board meeting minutes as attached for the November 20th, 2018 work session and the November 27th, 2018 board meeting? Mr. Navarette, is there a second? Ms. Drummond, any comments from the board? I will say that I do know that as part of our process for developing our agenda for the meeting, that things do sometimes change between the initial posting of the agenda and the meeting itself for a variety of different reasons. But up until tonight, had never really thought about the implications of that, so I appreciate the public bringing that to our attention. And I think it's something that, as a board, we can work with administration to see if there's a way that we can rectify it, so that there is better documentation of changes. Are there any other comments from the board on the minutes?
Just quickly add two things. One, am I correct that it was initially 24 hours and recently, in the last two years, we asked it to be three days? Is that correct? I just wanted to check.
That's correct. In 2015, it was posted 24 hours before the board meeting. We did change it to 72 hours, but in doing so, that means that sometimes things are getting finalized and get put onto the agenda a little bit closer to meeting time, so that we can get things approved in a timely manner.
And if I remember correctly, I think that was the hesitation, because I think many of us wanted to be more transparent and we were concerned about the 24-hour window, and that's why we asked it to be 72. But there are things that change, especially in human resources and other things. And then the other thing I'd just like to say, I know the board secretary, Dr. Zerby's secretary, works very hard to work on the minutes. It's not always easy. She's working from video and working with, I forget what she called it, but she did tell me how difficult it is to sometimes pick up on everything. But we take note of the recent errors or changes you have noted. Mr. Bickelman?
I would just ask, Dr. Zerby, if you could figure out a way that the agenda does not change, only in like absolute dire needs for some reason? Because the agenda gets posted, if I'm incorrect, I think it's Saturday evening it goes live, becomes available to the public. So you're really like talking about one day or so that we should be able to lock this down. So I'd ask you to take a look, hard look at that and see if you can not have provisions.
Yeah, I think we're missing the point on some of the sequencing here. Typically, there are a number of changes up until the last minute before a regular work session. So that does happen more frequently than anything. However, because of our board meetings normally being held on a Tuesday, there have been changes, but very infrequently, from the moment that we make a determination at the work session to the actual voting meeting. It has happened, but not very frequently. In this instance, our meeting was obviously a Monday night, and the posting went out on Friday. There was still work from our last meeting to, you know, finalize some matters. So there are certainly some changes that occurred at the last minute. We apologize for that, but it's not typical of our practice. So to say that the agenda will never change, I mean, the board can certainly, you know, direct not to occur, but that means that it never changes, unless you vote to unchange that. And there's a lot that occurs. But I think this board has done a tremendous job in working with the administration on allowing us to make whatever changes we need prior to the working session, so that we get all the items on that need to be considered, allowing the board members to have a week, a little over a week to, you know, review any of those items as well before a vote. So I think that, you know, the point's taken, that if there is a change, there needs to be a better mechanism to communicate the change. I think that's the critical piece to all of this. And I think that was the message that I heard from this evening. So that we can do, and I think that would be, you know, easily done. There's been a change, we can communicate that out. And we can even post it on the website, send out a communication, number of different ways. So it's quite simple. But to say that there never be a change, that would probably put the board in a bad position. But communication would be a good thing.
Just a quick statement, I do like the timestamp. So when you say edited, with a timestamp, edited, another timestamp, just so that, we definitely need to have an open communication and timestamping, so when someone glances and then thinks it's over, but then can go back and say, "Oh, it was edited." It's just a good way to portray that.
Any other comments from the board on the board meeting minutes? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the board meeting minutes for November 20th and November 27th meetings? Motion carries 9-0. Fiscal items, Mr. Bricker?
Listed bills, treasure report, and budgetary transfers for November, December will be provided in January.
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Personnel items, Mr. Regina?
Thank you, just a few items this evening for the board's consideration. First item is employment administrative, excuse me, recommending the employment of Amanda Kelly as a coordinator of school and community information. Amanda could not be with us this evening, but is a graduate of Temple University, majoring in broadcasting and journalism. She has 12 years of communication and broadcast industry experience. She's been working for CBS3 as an assignment editor, lead sub-channel producer, news producer and writer. So we're very excited to have Amanda's with us. We do have an effective TBD. We're still waiting, once we get this approved, then she has to resign from her position and then we're waiting what that effective date would be. The next item is uncompensated leave. We have one item. We have three items for supplemental contracts. One item under a classified substitute list. One item for volunteers, and one item for community education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Regina. Do any board members want to take any of the personnel items individually? All right, then, can I have a motion to approve all personnel items as presented here this evening? Ms. Reese, and a second, Ms. Drummond, any comments from the board?
I just have a quick question. I would imagine, since she's not coming from education and has that lovely 60 days, that if she is approved this evening, that should not be as long as 60 days, since we are in need of some communication help.
That is correct. She, the targeted date is after the new year, so we're hoping that she'll be able to start right away.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the board, Mr. Navarette?
Yeah, just, I had the pleasure of sitting in on the first round of interviews where we screened the first round of candidates. And I'll say Amanda's presence in the room was exciting, the energy that she brings. Certainly, it's a different set of qualifications than we're used to, but I think that's going to be a good thing for us. I'm excited to have her on board.
I couldn't agree more. Ms. Drummond and I sat in on the last round of interviews with Ms. Kelly, and she definitely has a presence about her that I think is going to bring some really great and exciting things to Methacton, and I'm looking forward to having her on board here. Are there any other comments from the board? Mr. Winters?
Just one question, under item N, are there any volunteers to be approved? I didn't see any attached to the agenda.
I'll take a look to get that attachment, Brian. I don't have it in front of me either, so. Are there two?
There's two names, Matthew Lockwood and Evie McDonald.
Okay. All right, thanks. Thank you.
I did have a question. I'm just more of a statement. I know that when we look at coaching and we look at how hard sometimes it could be to fill it, to be able to recognize and understand flexibility of elementary school teachers stepping up to middle school position, I know one person just stepped up. I just hope that we're all working together to make sure there's coverage on both ends, because I know it's hard to fill that position, but...
Any other comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the personnel items as presented this evening? Motion carries 9-0. Curriculum and programs, Dr. Katona, I don't see anything on the agenda, is that correct? All right, thank you. Policy, Dr. Zerby?
Yes, for policy, we have second reading items. There's five. Policy 105 curriculum, policy 108, adoption of textbooks, policy 349, bullying, cyberbullying and harassment, policy 704, maintenance, and policy 806, child abuse.
May I have a motion to approve the second reading policies as presented here this evening? Ms. Hall, is there a second? Ms. Drummond, any comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor? The motion carries 9-0. For other, I'll turn it back to Dr. Zerby.
Thank you. Under number 13, we have the 2019 board meeting schedule that was posted later today. It lists the regular voting meeting, the work session meetings, and all the committee meetings and their scheduled times and dates. I guess it would be appropriate at this time, are there any suggestions or comments or questions from the board related to any of these dates and times?
I just wanted to point out to the Education Committee that there was a change, and it was not of my doing, which is fine, but I just wanted to make you all aware of it, because it's been switched from the first Monday to the second Monday. So I just wanted to make you all aware of that.
That was October, correct?
Yes.
Yes, we made that change. Are there any other comments or questions or concerns? Ms. Hall?
I had submitted a question. I know we haven't confirmed committee assignments yet, but for policy, I was wondering if it would be possible to have an August meeting, just to consider review of the student and parent handbooks.
Yeah, I know that's something that, having previously chaired the committee, we've done that in the past, and I would agree that that could be useful. But I understand, Dr. Zerby, we have plenty of time, that we can make that addition, or...
Yeah, we certainly can make the addition. I think that, it was my understanding that while we've had the handbooks on the, oh, you're talking about staff and student handbooks, or what did you, or did you say student? Okay. So, yeah, so the student handbooks, we used to have them as a regular item on the agenda. It was my understanding that we were, we got through that process and we were no longer going to have the handbooks reviewed. But as usual, we would have the code of conduct reviewed by the board and approved on an annual basis by the board. But is it the interest of the committee to continue reviewing the handbooks as a whole?
a whole?
I can't speak for everyone, but I would be interested in reviewing the handbooks in case we have any modifications. If not necessarily, we don't need to vote on them, I would just like to have the ability to review them.
So do we want to put a date in for August? Because what I, what I, what I want to know, I want to, want to inform the board about is these dates then would be published and there is a cost to the publishing. So if, if there's any reason why we would not want any of these dates or want to add anything, one, one time putting this in the paper is probably a, a more advantageous financial transaction.
In keeping with how we normally schedule, it would be August 7th, Wednesday, August
So we'll amend the, the document to include August 7th, is that correct? Okay. There's no motion at this point. There's, there's no motion on the table, no. I asked a question before a motion was taken, yep. Thought we could get this out of the way before we have to amend motions and change things. So that is policy. Okay. Are there any other comments or questions on the attached schedule of meetings? If not, I'll turn it back over to the president.
So now I'll ask, can we have a motion to approve the board's school district, I'm sorry, Methacton School District Board of School Directors Board Meeting Schedule for 2019 as attached and as amended this evening? Ms. Hull, a second, Ms. Winters? Are there any comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? The motion carries nine zero. We don't have any gifts and donations or trips posted here this evening, but Dr. Zerby, I'll turn it back over to you for the Arrowhead property timeline.
Thank you very much. So this evening I placed at your place a, a draft of a, of a schedule and I'll just, I'll just share it with you so that everyone knows what, what I'm sharing. Basically I have November 2018, the superintendent presentation to the board and the public at a special meeting. We'll take public comment, period from November 9th through the 27th of November. Then, and then in December, I have here the board discusses the timeline and need for any additional information as part of this Arrowhead property decision-making process. In January of 2019, I have listed here the superintendent presents additional information as needed and provides a recommendation. I have here the board votes to narrow the options in January. In February of 2019, the superintendent provides more detail on remaining options or option, option or options. And then in April of 2019, June and July, those, those dates come directly from the master plan facilities timeline. And the only reason that they're there, and is this is similar to a, a previous draft that I've provided the board, that it, it gives you an idea as if of the three options, if we were going to get a, a renovation type thing on the, on the table for Arrowhead as being one of the options that, that's out there right now, that timeline would, would be, would be critical. And the reason that is, is if, if we start going down the path, not considering that we're going to do any renovations to Arrowhead, we would then consider other renovations that are in the master plan. They would then get to the board sometime in June or July. You would then give us the, generally would give us the okay to start getting bid documents prepared for those things with the potential of now incurring soft costs associated with that. So that's the only reason that it's there. If the board decides that, you know, they can't get a decision by any of those dates, that's, that's fine as well. But I think it's critical that our, our conversation has at least a little bit of time associated with it so that it kind of gives ourselves the opportunity to stay on target, gets you the information and any other discussions that are necessary and informs the public as well of what, where we are and where we, where we stand. So, so obviously depending on the January decision, if this is the, the timeline that we continue to go by, if there's a narrowing of the options, the type of information that would be provided in February will be depending on what's actually the options that are still remaining. So, so, so for example, if we were at, at a position where, you know, you, you were saying that you wanted to see information on a, on a school closure, I would be providing certain information. If you wanted to know something related to what, what it's a benefit, what's the difference between a renovation of X versus a building of a new school, you know, I would have to, you know, get certain professional services engaged to get you those, those types of numbers. So it really depends on the options. So that's, that's the, the schedule. I'm, I'm open to discussion or input and I, I will, I will make sure that everyone does know that on our agenda right now for a January presentation of additional information is utilization study and the full day kindergarten cost analysis. Those we have on record of being the two major things that, that we have for the board to consider that you, that you last requested. The previous request to that was done at the work session in November. I believe that was from Mr. Winters, a better explanation on the, the room, or the, the use of the, of the classrooms today and, and Dr. Engstad did that presentation in November. So I'm, I'm open to any other comments or questions, but this is, this is what I have for you this evening.
Yeah, the, the one, I did find my, my notes here from my request. I think we, we've talked about this before and it's hard, people coming from the outside to completely understand if we're doing this and I think it's a point, a point we need to make out, that the pros and cons of the educational benefits is the starting point of these decisions, in my mind, at least, that's my, my mind. So one of the things that I still would like to see is the pros and cons of a K3, a K4, a K5, the 6.3 versus the 7.8. There's been research done, it, it's gonna, there's gonna be opinions on both sides on every combination, but to, to summarize those into sort of the common thought, thought process in the educational environment of the pros and cons of having a K3 school versus a K to 5 school, I don't know those. I'm not an expert in that, so I would like to have some feedback on that, the understanding that, you know, even to the point of eighth grade in the high school, I think it's ridiculous, but if there's some educational benefit that, that we're not thinking of, keep an open mind towards what that might be. So some type of presentation that had that element as a starting point would be helpful.
Okay, I have that recorded. Any other, any other comments on timelines or, or basically any other additional information that may be needed by the board? Ms. Reese?
My only comment is, and you know, we do have these three options and the plan is to hopefully narrow it down in January. And then if there's two, still three options or there's two options left in February, I'm just worried a little bit about the ti, the, excuse me, the turnaround. What I mean by that is, and I'm not, I'm not making assumptions here, but if we narrow it down to renovate or rebuild, because I'm not through all of the public comment yet, but I've gotten through most of it. I haven't opened some of the zip and yes, it's not just a public, it's a group decision here. So I received, I don't know, I read 100 plus so far and, you know, I kind of divided into those who thought new, those who thought fix, and they don't have all the information yet, those who just say don't close but don't have a preference, and then those who say close. And I'm up to like 100 plus don't close, 19 want new, 25 want renovate, 53 just say don't close. And those aren't hard numbers, this is just me going through and making my tally. So if we get down to renovate or rebuild, if, if that's what we get down to in this January, and then we're going to need a lot of information, I assume from mostly Fidavia, about exactly the cost effectiveness of renovating versus rebuilding. I'm just worried a little bit about the, about the turnaround time. And I know we can't say to them earlier, what about these two? Because then they do hours and hours of work when we have yet to vote. So I, I just, I don't know if it's that we try to do this mid-January and give them till the end of February, I don't know. I just, I don't want to run into the, to the problem of, oh, there we, you know, it's a big decision, but I don't want to run into the problem like, oh, they said it was going to be February and they don't have enough information yet, those kinds of things. I guess that's my biggest concern because, you know, it's a big difference between renovating and rebuilding.
Yeah, I think that's a fair comment. Maybe if, unless the board, you know, the members of the board object, I, I would put their February slash March, because depending on the options, you're right. I mean, it's gonna, it, it could be a lot of information that needs to be gathered in a short period of time. So that's a fair, that's a fair comment.
On the other side of that though, I'm worried that if we push it to March, then our ability to act on any construction-related decision becomes impacted because we're, we're running out of time, running out of months in 2019 and it gets pushed into another academic year. So I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of that if we push the decision point out
I have some questions about the numbers that we're using as the renovate and the new cost. So my understanding is that the repair cost is approximately from the facilities report $14 million. So I, I was wondering what kind of a cost that is? Is that a repair cost or is that a renovation cost? Because I feel like those two things might be quite different. So to, my, my, I guess what I'm saying is to repair it for $14 million and then you have your same, your structure repaired, that's the same? Or is it renovating and adding and, you know, making group room, you know, different things like, like the other elementary schools currently have?
Yeah, so if I, just so I, I'm trying to try to clarify what you're asking. So the, the repair would be that if, as an example, if the roof is in bad shape, we would replace the roof. But in terms of renovate might be if we have modular classrooms that are then to be removed and, and a renovation would be like an addition on to, is, is that, is that more, where we're adding something new, is that, is that, we're differentiating between the two?
Yes, I, I guess I'm, I'm thinking that there could be a third number in these costs that we're talking about that falls between the new and the, the repair, that, that to get it to what the other elementary schools have currently, because they've been renovated fairly recently, to get it to, to that standard is, might be a third cost that we haven't quite defined.
Dave, can I jump in? Yeah, I'll just say this, I think any discussion right now about renovation or degree of repair or rebuilding is, is very, very premature. I mean, even within property committee, the numbers that we came to from a rebuild standpoint were based on a sketch on the back of a napkin and an estimate based on a cost per square foot. That's it. I think, I would love to think that we're, we're going to be able to move forward in, in a timeline of February where we're going to really be discussing in detail further options, but you know, to me, the first decision is, that's got so much attention tonight, is to whether or not we move forward with a, a discussion on closure and consolidation, period. That's all the information that we have been presented with so far, over the last three, four years now. That's where everything is geared toward. We haven't done any kind of work so far to discuss what level of, you know, repair or renovation or rebuilding would be appropriate. The, the numbers that have been quoted so far, the 12 to 14 million, talk about repair. That's given us the same building back that we have now and just in better shape. That's a really big number for a repair. You wonder, to me, then, the discussion then becomes if we were to do something more with that 12 to 14 million dollars, what if it was 16, what if it was 18? What, what would those things get us? But we need to know those things. We need, you know, Fidavia and whomever else has to do a lot of work before we can get to that point to have that level of discussion. I think what we talk about in February and March is going to start in property, we'll discuss a little bit in work sessions, going to go back to property, we're gonna have, that is going to be a long iterative discussion if that's where we go.
Yeah, if we, if we get, if we get to that point, what will likely happen is you would, I would seek an authorization to engage a, a firm to do this feasibility piece and it would probably be a three-month window. I mean, that's, that's kind of how this really would play out, if, if that's, if that's what was decided.
Yeah, and I, I think then what would follow is, is, you know, anything that gets done or is planned for the summer of 2020, right, which is the master plan work that we're talking about here, would stem from that first decision, right? If Arrowhead stays open, is there work that needs to be done immediately? Because we have not done that work this year, last year, this coming summer. Are there things that we need absolutely do in the building right now before we do something else with the building? Those are the things that we would be looking to address in the immediate window. And then you've got to back into timelines and where the projections are and when we need a new, you know, when we would need a new or renovated building, I mean, all those things. And none of those discussions have been added to any level of detail yet.
So I think what I'm gathering from the conversation and from what Dr. Zerby has presented here this evening is that what Dr. Zerby needs to know is if we as a board need further information in order to feel comfortable moving forward with narrowing our options in January. So taking the information from the November 8th meeting, taking the information that, that we all have available to us now, is there still more information that we need before we're going to be able to move forward? And if this timeline seems reasonable, starting with that January date of voting to narrow down our options, am I correct, Dr. Zerby? That's, okay. So I think that's what we should probably be focusing on to Mr. Navaret's point, let's not get too hung up in the cost options just yet because that's going to need more than we can accomplish in this evening.
Just one thing here, I just want to clarify the January part. You're asking, you know, do we need any more information? Dr. Zerby said that in January we will be given some more information. I just want to make sure that I must, I would hope that that would be presented at the work session and then we would be voting the next week based off of that. I just don't want to be put in the position that we're running behind, we don't have all the information. Here we are at the board meeting, we're given information and then asked to vote that night. I want to make sure that no matter what happens, that that is not the end result.
I would 100% agree to that.
Do we have, do we have a list or do you, are you carrying a list of outstanding items? Because one of my concerns here is that the, the glacial pace at which government works, which has been one of my greatest frustrations on this, we're right in private sector, we just, we hop in a room, we make a decision, we move on, we adjust the discussion, the decision next week or next month. We get a shot once a month to make a decision and move forward. Can, I'm just, I'm going to, I guess I'll throw it out to the board and to you, Dr. Zerby, and let's make sure that we have everything in front of us. We're never going to have a complete 100% picture of everything that we want, but let's get as close to it as possible so that in January we can make a decision and we can put this decision to bed once and for all, one way or the other, and we can alleviate the stress on the entire district.
I know at the November 8th meeting, I had brought this up, that my concern tied into the student services slide number 15. And my request would be, I think it ties into what Mr. Winters is asking for, just when you're looking at the educational benefits, the pros and cons, if you could incorporate the special education needs and the student services that are on that slide.
Another element of fact that would just be helpful for clarity for everybody is the number of classrooms that are used in Skyview that were originally part of our call.
I don't want to muddy the waters, but if we have a work session in January where all this is discussed and then the plan is a week later to narrow down at the board meeting, do we need to, are there members of the administration that we need here that aren't normally here to answer questions? Does anybody think that? I don't, I don't, I don't know. I know when I, previously, when we were discussing Autobahn, I did sometimes want some other administrators' thoughts. And the reason for that being is that Dr. Zerby and other people work in the curriculum. I did sometimes want some other administrators' thoughts. And the reason for that being is that Dr. Zerbi and other people work in the curriculum, in the district office for the most part. So I don't know if we do or not. I don't know if any board members, I just worry that sometimes we say, oh, we, we have that question, oh, we'll have to get back. And we can get back in the next day or two. We have seven days. But I don't know if we want to think about if there's anybody else we want here. I don't know. Do, you know, do we need building administrators here? Are there any questions?
Well, I think it's going to be critical as we complete this list here to determine that. So I know we're still getting some input here. So if, if that is so determined, we'll make sure that those people are here. Are there any other thoughts on items for, of information that are needed? So right now I have a list, I'm sorry.
I guess, first thing is, I'm trying to get an understanding of where we stand with the Malone and McBroom updated enrollment projections. There's been a lot of discussion about errors in the report, not having current information. Is their report final? Have they issued a final signed report that we all have or can get? Or, that's my first question. I have a few other items as well.
Let's take one at a time. All right. So we received a final report from them. It is the one that's posted online. It's the one that I included as part of my presentation from November eighth. It is a report similarly done to that which was done prior to the board, prior to this request for a report. And it was the same company, the same individuals put together the report that was used to substantiate the need for a school closure, which resulted in Autobahn being a board-approved for school closure. So it's my recommendation that if the board so feels that there are concerns with, with the report, which the administration does not believe so, then we need to, we need to address that. But at this moment, that report stands as, as it does, as a piece of information that suggests what the trend and pipeline projects and all other information contained in it.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned two items that we're working on for January, one being the utilization review and another being an analysis of full-day kindergarten. Can you kind of just give a summary of what you envision those two items looking like and what will be contained in those?
So I think, and for the full-day kindergarten, we would, we would estimate the number of rooms that would be required to run full-day kindergarten. We would then provide an estimated cost in staffing as, as well as what we believe to be a reduction in, in expense, which would be the midday runs for transportation. And we'll be looking at, you know, the cost of materials, all the things included to make sure that a, a full program would be made available. We would likely be using a, a projection number closer to the first grade enrollment versus that for which we wouldn't necessarily double kindergarten to give you a full-day program. We would utilize the first grade enrollment based on the, on the Malone and McBroom projections. And from there, talk about a, a, a process for the implementation of such a program and how that would, would have a general impact on, on, on the budget and how we might afford to implement that.
Okay, so basically a full cost analysis of what it would take to implement such a program.
Full cost and operational, yes.
Would also include any of the benefits, pros, cons of?
Absolutely. We shared some of those in the presentation on November eighth, but we can revisit those as well. I think on your next item was the utilization study. That, that is a, a matter, it's, it's been, it's been challenging to try to get that all worked out. I, I want to try, I was trying to stay away from the, from, from any major assumptions. But we, we were visiting the, there was a study done a number of years ago by Thompson that had put together a utilization study, leveraging that information as well as the room utilization, or use that we have right now to make sure that the utilization factors are, are consistent across the district. So we'll have that information for you. It'll show you how it's currently used. It'll show you the, the, the percentage of, of time that the spaces are not used. So for example, like in a high school or in a, like in Arcola, for example, there are, there are times, sometimes two, sometimes three periods a day where certain rooms aren't used. And so you'll know that of an eight-period day, three times, three periods out of an eight-period day, you know, the, the room won't be used, so you, you would have that. But it's not for every, it's not for every teacher, so it's not for every subject. And so there's a lot of detailed work that we need to go through to make sure that it's just not a carte blanche that, okay, we got all the math teachers and the math teachers only use it, you know, six periods out of an eight-period day. So we're currently digging into that information.
Okay. I, I guess what I was looking for is something a little more real-time as opposed to theoretical. And whereby you take a building, it's got twenty-five rooms, classroom eligible rooms in it. What happens to that room, each of those rooms throughout the entire school day? Eight to eight, ten is homeroom, eight fifteen to eight, whatever is grade three social studies. And then we move, it kind of break it out and real-time, what happens in every single classroom? How many students are in there? What grades are in there? And how are those rooms utilized? So that's, that's kind of the detail I was looking for and trying to stay away from plan con, theoretical capacity and.
I didn't mention plan con or theoretical capacity. I was actually, I was trying to explain and I apologize for not communicating this effectively. But I was trying to explain that what we're trying to do is make sure that the utilization reflects the way our current schedule is today. So it's not as easy as saying, well, all the math teachers only use their classroom, say, six out of the eight periods. I can do that math real quick and, and we could probably have a report to you. But that's not necessarily how every classroom is used. So we're actually going back into and having the discussions, discussions with the building principals to come verify the way the schedule runs today and how that utilization occurs today. So it will be similar to, I don't know if I'd be including home, well, I guess we need to include homeroom and, and this wasn't necessarily some part of my calculation at this point.
I was just throwing out.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
Just a breakdown of all the day parts.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Of our school day and what goes on.
Absolutely. Includes lunch and everything. Absolutely, yep.
I need a clarification on something that just came up here. So when we're talking about the utilization numbers, I heard you mention Thompson. Are we going back to the information from the Thompson report?
Well, I think what's important is to, to recognize that there was a utilization study done back then. It's, 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 it's best if we review what that had said compared to what we're about to say. So that, you know, we're not saying some, you know, again, I'm not a utilization expert. So what, what that means is we're going to use what's, what's called reasonable math to give you the, how we calculate, what it is we calculate, and we'll step you through that process. But I want to make sure that there is a, there are numbers associated with the Thompson study that suggest that there's a, a utilization number that you do not want to go beyond, that, that doesn't give you the flexibility. So it was like eighty-five or ninety percent utilization capacity so that you're not putting yourself into a bind. And so there's some, there's some particular details in his study that I think would be useful for the board to be aware of.
I just want to make sure that we're treading carefully there. The Thompson study was done prior to me being on the board. But as I recall, they're an architectural firm. And, and there was some concerns at that time about whether an architectural firm could reasonably do any type of a capacity study on an educational institution and understand the educational impact of the analysis that they were doing. So I just want to make sure that we are very careful about how we're using their information so that we're not, I guess, giving them more authority than they should reasonably have given their area of expertise.
Can I just, let me ask you a question then. When Dr. Angstad provided us the homeroom analysis, would it not be where it says there were no homerooms available in certain buildings? Could we not say that homeroom was utilized seventy-five percent of the time? Like, are we using the homeroom analysis along with the utilization? I'm not, you know, what is one versus the other? Because if, my understanding, when I looked at her report, I thought it was very thorough to say in these buildings, all buildings, all homerooms are utilized, but we didn't know, was it seventy-five percent, fifty percent?
Yeah, I, I, I think that while, I think her numbers play into this to, to some degree. Specifically, like if we were looking at elementary schools, we would say that if there were X number of classrooms that are homeroom-eligible, we could not fill more than the homeroom-eligible number of classrooms regardless of the, the way the schedule would run. So, so, but that's a little different than in some of these other buildings. And that's why we need to do the utilization study. Because like at the high school and other schools where, where there's just transition of, of student spaces are sometimes not used a hundred percent of the day. But, and, and, and the number of homeroom-eligible spaces may not necessarily be, the homerooms in, for, for example, Arcola and the high school may not necessarily be the only spaces that are used for instruction. Where primarily the homeroom spaces in an elementary school are the predominant rooms for instruction. And there are other supplemental rooms that couldn't hold homerooms or large groups. And that's why Dr. Angstad listed all those types of resources out. So in all, in all fairness, she provides, her information is detailed and provides a, a good segment of how we're using the buildings today. But if we were, say, for example, wanted to, you know, push more students into any of those buildings, we would have to change the, the, the schedule in order to fill all those empty spaces that is not being used. And that would be similar to how a schedule is done at, at a, at a high school level.
And Brian, am I, are you asking, and maybe you're not, so that we can make this easier? For example, I teach seventh grade reading. There's eight periods in the day and my room has utilized six of those periods. So there are two periods my room is empty. Maybe I have to go do a duty, you know, go coverage. But are you suggesting that you want to know that there's, my room's not used for two periods and the person next to me is not used for two periods? So then a teacher could get together and use, you don't want that kind of information. I mean, to me, my room is my room. And yes, if there was some overcrowding issues, there are, every once in a while, there's an extreme, extreme situation where you have a year or two where there's overcrowding and maybe somebody has to use my room one period. But in my mind, my classroom counts as my classroom even though it is empty forty, forty-two, I'm an English reading teacher, forty-two times two, you know, minutes.
That, that is exactly what I'm looking for.
Okay.
And I'm not suggesting that we would go, because one of those periods is probably your planning period in your example. It could be. But I'm not, that's the kind of analysis I'm looking for. I'm no way suggesting that we take one period here and we start shuffling everywhere because it becomes an administrative and logistical nightmare, I would imagine. So, but I would like to get an understanding is if there's an eight-period day and there is, for those eight periods, there is one student in that room for special education. And then it's a decision, is that appropriate? Is that necessary? Or is there an alternative? Now, maybe that's absolutely necessary and we understand that and that's the way we move forward. But I would like to get an understanding, and I think it's important, to know how the classrooms are utilized. I think it's the only way of truly knowing whether or not there is excess capacity in the schools. And we can make decisions, and I'm all for appropriately-sized class. I'm not suggesting we increase class size. Just get an understanding of how those classrooms are utilized. And then as we make a decision as a district, how do we want those classrooms utilized? If we find there are four classrooms empty for the entire day, that's something that should be addressed. The problem is, I don't have any way of knowing that right now, with the information available to me.
Real quick, and I don't want to, so what you're saying is my room and rooms like my room count as in this category. But you're curious about those rooms that possibly are underutilized. Like we talked about with the elementary schools, that math and gifted could share because the math support person's not there on the same day as the gifted support. Is that what you meant?
Exactly. Because one of the things that's concerning to me, and I have no idea how, how much of an issue this is, but one thing I heard in one of the presentations was, well, we use a space because it's there. That's concerning. That might be one room. That could be five rooms. I, I don't know. That's the problem. And I think this utilization is where, for me personally, I'm short on facts. And that's why I'm looking for this utilization study and I've been looking for this for, you know, a little bit of time now.
So just, so I get a, a classification. It sounded like you, you not only wanted utilization by the classroom, but, but it sounded like you put students in the classroom as well. So you, you want us to factor the number of students that are educated at the time that the classroom is used as, as a part of that factor? Because that's, that's a little bit of a different calculation. I just want to make sure I'm clear.
I'm, I'm looking for zero calculations. I'm looking for what's reality. What happens on a daily, weekly basis in the schools?
Well, I, I apologize. So what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that there, there is going to be some math here to, to this. To, you know, get, if you want to, because what you're, what you're suggesting is that at some point, and, and there are, there are rooms in every building. I'm telling you this right now, there's rooms in every building that are not used at some period throughout the day. So that, I mean, so, so the, the question is, we can go through nth degree of, of, of whatever information you need to get and we'll get that for you. I just want you to know that when we're done, you're going to, here's what you're going to have. You're going to have information that says that this gentleman's room here will have two periods free. The next teacher will have two periods free. And so what we'll go, eventually we'll have forty classrooms free at some point during the day. And so then the, the question is, well, we have, it sounds like we have forty classrooms that we can use. However, are they going to be available for, now, now, what we, what we would need to do is we would need to figure out then how we would then use, use those forty classrooms. Would we be able to bring another set of students in? And would that mesh with the, the teaming structure and the way the teams move and, and all sorts of different things? So we can do that. And we can lay that plan out. I, I, I just, I just kind of need to say this. I mean, we'll do, we'll do whatever the board wants us to do in terms of gathering information. I just want to make sure that, you know, every time that you, you, the board understands that when you ask me to do these things, it takes a lot of time. And it takes a lot of time for, for my staff, myself. And I'm not saying that it, it's not valuable time. I'm saying you've got to direct how I'm using my time. So when, when, when you make these requests to the nth degree, these things will take me away from doing some other things. And I just want you to know that your, your result is going to be a number, you're going to get a result that says, here are all the empty spaces at, at various times throughout the day. What are we going to do with that information? Because that's what it's going to tell you. And, and, and I'm telling you, it exists. It exists in every building. So what are we going to do with it?
And I, I understand that, but I, I, I think when you, you lay it out, I mean, if you see, if you have an eight-period elementary school that has one classroom, that instruction's going on for six of those periods, I'm just making numbers up, six of those periods, one of them's recess or one's lunch, one they're at a special where the teacher has his or her planning time. That's a full-utilized classroom in my view. You're not going to do anything with those two periods that the classroom might not have any students in it during the day. But if you've got another room down the hall that's used for one hour the entire day for one student, that's a different story.
I would, I would be uncomfortable with getting into too much detail as to how many students are being educated in a classroom when we start dealing with special education. So I, I, I agree with Mr. Earnshaw that it's useful to know what number of classrooms are being used for what percentage of the minutes of the day. But in my mind, if, if our special education department, as part of a student's IEP, have determined that they belong in that classroom as the only student in that classroom, I'm not comfortable as a board with getting involved in that. So I, I don't, I don't want to have that number. I don't want to know that. I, I don't want to touch it. I, I trust that the people who are developing these IEPs for these students know what's best for them. And so I, I just, I, all I want to know is, yes, that classroom is used for seventy-five percent of the day for special education services. And that's enough as far as I'm concerned.
Sir, middle ground here. Can, can we build off of the homeroom space list that you gave us before and look for the obvious efficiencies that are on that list? And say, there's a possibility here, we could consolidate a couple of classrooms. Because quite honestly, you know, to Brian's example, if you look at an elementary school day and just, we are there in school for six and a half hours. and just, we are there in school for six and a half hours a day, right? 390 minutes. 50 of those are for special, 30 are for lunch, and 30 are for recess. On a student hourly basis, that's 71.8% utilized. Now, that sounds like a low number, right? I come from an industry where if your utilization is 70%, you're sunk, right? But that's not what we're doing here. So can we take the, and I imagine Skyview looks very similar to that, right? Because of the model there. And our COLA probably isn't too much different, although with languages and stuff, there's probably some efficiencies. Can we simply look at those one-off opportunities and exclude the rest of those spaces? And say, this is where the opportunities lie? And let's, this way, we can get, we can get the answers that we need. But it saves you the work of going through on an hour-by-hour basis?
Just real quick, that's Jen and I just said. That's what we were both trying to say. Maybe we just didn't, you know, that's, that's, and I don't want to speak for you, but that's kind of where we were. And I think that's kind of where you are, Kim, based on what you said.
That's where I am as well.
Any other, any other comments on, on that? But I know you had some other questions.
Yeah, Mr. Winters covered one of them with respect to, with the construction of Skyview, what spaces were taken away. So that was one of the questions I had. The other thing, and if nobody's done this, I'll go back and do it myself. But has anybody looked at the facilities assessment study with respect to that $14 million number we keep throwing away for Arrowhead? If I remember correctly, it included a couple of million for expansion, a stage upgrade. And I'm really looking to get a sense of what are the real numbers for Arrowhead that need to get done that are really building envelope issues, HVAC issues, things along those lines. I don't, I don't think that's 14 million, it's probably some lesser number.
Actually, we, the original facilities assessment study was about 12.5 million dollars, what they suggested. And this very topic was brought up, actually, I think by Mr. Ryan. And we had gone through an evaluation, had Fidavia do the evaluation of that along with our, rest of our construction team. And the number actually came up to be 14 point, I'm going to say $8 million, I think is, is the number. So the number that we've been talking about, it actually increased because what it didn't include was the replacement of the, with the modulars. And, and the sheet that I can provide the board, it was, it was a document that talked about all that that was reviewed. And it had like 12 million dollars on it that, that did not include things like some of the, we'll call them less need, need items. They were, they were, they were specific to, these are the things that need to get done. And the additional 2 million related to the, I think an addition on to Arrowhead, which would take care of the modulars long-term. So I can provide that to the board as, as a, as an update. So that work was, was done.
Yeah, it was discussing property, it was, I got it just sitting here right in front of me. He left that computer, but I got it. It's a, it was discussed in June 2018 in property. And the list came out to be 11.2 million plus the 2.5 in extra things that you said, which was the building addition, 2.2. And then there were stage upgrades for another, it looks like, small 300 grand.
So we'll get that to everyone, guys.
All right, that, that would be helpful. And then there was a comment somewhere along the way, I forget if it was November 8th or a subsequent meeting about if our COLA went back to a 678 building, the whole team structure would have to change. And I had questioned about like, well, what, I didn't understand why it would need to change. Like, get an understanding of that, if you could. And then as far as the timeline itself. So these two January events, I assume the first one would be the January 15th work session is when all this additional information would be provided? Would any of that be provided in advance of that meeting for review?
I think we can provide several of these items that were suggested here this evening. I'd have to go back and work with my team to see where we're at with the utilization.
Okay. Because to the extent a lot of this information comes into the 15th, I assume the next event would be the 22nd meeting. If I got the dates right on the calendar you, we looked at earlier. Because if, to the extent we, a lot of information comes on the 15th reviewing, that, that could be kind of tight. Just, depends how much information comes on the 15th. Just my opinion there. And then my last thing is, when you say board votes to narrow options, is there any thought on what that vote would be at this point?
I don't. I think what, what'll have to happen is we'll present the information at the work session. We'll get some direction that evening. It was my hope that I can, you know, after presenting all that information, I can provide a direction from the administration. And then we can decide what that, what that, what that board action might be. We would do that after we, we've seen the information. Again, I, I wanted to make sure that, you know, this may not be a rock-solid timeline. But, but, you know, not having a timeline at all, you know, really puts us in limbo of never getting anywhere with this conversation. So this is really a discussion point. If we want to, if we think that this is, you know, too fast, too soon, we can make, we can make adjustments. I'm not, I'm not tied to these months. I, I just want you to be, I want you to know that, you know, this is very similar to the, to the previous draft. So not much has really changed.
Yeah, I'll second Brian's comment about having as much of that information in advance of the work session as possible so that we can chew on it and digest it, right? A lot of this information we've had for, in some cases, months, in some cases, years. We've had time to go through it 16 ways from Sunday. As far as this timeline goes, can we just, can we officially, can we vote to adopt this timeline that this is what our decision point's going to be in January? It doesn't really have any teeth, maybe?
This wasn't put on your agenda as a voting action item. So I wouldn't recommend you trying to change it now. You could do it as new matter, but it doesn't sound like people were prepared to. This is a sort of a hold item, just more informational. So that I think the superintendent could get a sense of whether this was an appropriate direction from the board. But I wouldn't recommend you turning it into an action item for tonight.
Are there any other comments on the, the calendar or the schedule, I mean, timeline? Or any other additional items? So I'm just going to review real quick if I could. Utilization, I've taken into consideration of the opinions. We will full-day kindergarten cost and analysis, the pros and cons for the educational benefit of K3, K4, K5. And include in that special education needs and other related services. The original number of classrooms used in Skyview that were part of our COLA. The facilities assessment study update, which is the information that revised the original 12-point-some million dollars in the facilities assessment. And it was the revision to 14 million. And then how would the team structure change if we were going to fit a grade six into that building? That's what I have so far. Yes, Mr. Ryan?
Just clarification on the one point where it's the, you know, how many rooms did Skyview take from our COLA? Can we also include, I don't want it to just be the classroom, if there's dead space, as if it's a hallway or something like that? Because it might look like you only took two classrooms. But if there's an existing hallway getting you from point A to point B that wasn't there before, that would be classroom space that was there before, which isn't a new classroom, but is space that's needed.
We can, we can certainly do that. Well, I believe we've had this discussion before. We can provide a, a map that shows the exact areas. But that map is, because it shows the inside of the building, we're not going to make that available to the public. But, but for safety reasons, but we can.
Yeah, I think some of the board was privy to that information. I don't think the new board members have seen that.
Thank you for your feedback this evening. We'll get this information and we'll get moving on, on this for you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have dates for board members' calendars. Next week, we have a property and transportation committee meeting on December 10th. And then we'll have our whole slew of new meetings next year. Is there anything for old business? New business? All right, at this time, we'll go to courtesy, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One item. It is, it is also my recommendation that, starting in January, I would, I would recommend that we begin a discussion on the Audubon property. I think we're at a point where we, we've kind of removed all the items or many of the items that we thought we, we no longer needed. We're at a point now that I think it's, it's probably well within our, our interest to have that discussion. So I will check with the board president and we'll talk about how to put that on the agenda for a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. And with that, we'll go to courtesy of the floor.
Jim Malik, Warsester. We have some pretty serious, serious problems after hearing what I just heard. The, this Arrowhead project's a done deal. May as well just cut out the old closure and realignment right now after what I just heard. I guess the, when I hear about the utilization study and I hear Dr. Zerby saying it just takes a lot of time and it's like pulling teeth to get the study, you know, it's over. I mean, why, why even bother doing it? You know, you've been asking for it forever. Well, there's a reason you're not getting it. You know, and you're, and you're asking for real-time study instead of mathematical calculations. Well, he wants to give you mathematical calculations for a reason. He doesn't want the real-time data getting out. Well, there's a reason for all that. Because the real-time data is going to be what shows, it's going to be favorable to closure and realignment. He doesn't want to get down. You know, the whole thing makes me ill at this point. The quote of the evening goes to Mr. Navarette. Wants to get this thing done because he wants to alleviate the stress. Wants to alleviate the stress. Let's just get it done to alleviate the stress. Well, yeah, maybe the stress of, you know, you're, you know, fulfilling your campaign promise to all the people you said you weren't going to close Arrowhead. That's not why you do what you do. You know, you don't make your decision to alleviate stress. You do it based on facts. You do it based on doing the right thing. You don't do it to alleviate stress. What a ridiculous statement. I can't believe you guys. Then we have somebody up here, you know, talking about, they got 100 responses and she's impressed about all the pro responses. Well, if you really want to do it the right way, here's what you do. You got 33,000 residents, right? Send out a mailer, tell them that you could save $22 million by closure and realignment versus building a $22 million school, and then get the feedback. And I guarantee you, I guarantee you, they're going to say, close and realign. So do it the right way. Send, send out something to everybody and say, here's your choice. Close, realign, save 22 million versus build 20, $25 million school and get taxed. And I guarantee you what the response is going to be. Or put it on the ballot as a referendum, even better. That would be a way to do it and get the public's response. I guarantee you, you guys will, will get, get the response you deserve. Dr. Zerby's talk in November 8th wasn't, you know, pardon me, Dr. Zerby, but the only way I can describe it was a joke. It was a joke. And I like you too. I think you're a good guy. It was a joke. We learned absolutely nothing. It was, it was a propaganda, it was a propaganda machine. Case in point, you know, you gave everybody the impression we had no space. But you know that's, that's incorrect. Now you're talking about full-day kindergarten. Now how, when you're, when you're telling everybody we have no, no homerooms, how do you give full-day kindergarten? Well, you know that we're not operating at our functional capacity or our planning capacity. So why do you give everybody the impression and don't explain to them what the facts are? We have a.
Dr. Malik, please wrap up.
Sure. We have a propaganda board. And you guys are the kings and queens of propaganda. And it's got to stop. It's got to stop. But we may as well kiss, we may as well kiss any kind of fairness goodbye here.
Thank you, Dr. Malik.
Let me finish. I'm almost done my sentence.
You're finished.
Let me finish my sentence.
Thank you, Dr. Malik.
Let me finish my sentence.
You're finished.
May as well kiss.
Thank you, Dr. Malik.
Any fairness and objectivity.
Please have a seat.
About this project, goodbye.
Thank you, Dr. Malik. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor?
Joe Bickelman from Audubon. I just want to let you know that I spent 35 years in public school business. I spent 33 years at Colonial and two years at Great Valley School District. My goal was to try to find ways to save money so we can direct those savings into the classrooms so that the kids can have better opportunities so they can succeed in their future. That was my base, that was my mission statement. That's how I operated. Okay, just follow me on this. I don't blame this current board for past board's decisions, okay? With 5,600 kids, enrollment's going to go up to 6,500. We better build Skyview, okay? So we had five elementaries. We're going to go up to 6,500. Let's build a sixth elementary, okay? We have six elementaries to handle those 6,500 kids that we should have today. All right? They don't show up. We have six elementaries, they don't show up, the 6,500 kids. We close Audubon, okay? Now we're down to those five original elementary schools, okay? Not only do the kids not show up, the 6,500 kids, now enrollment goes down 800 kids, okay? Hey, we better close another school. That's 800 kids less, okay? That decline in enrollment creates excess capacity. And coming to the board meetings like I do and committee meetings, it also creates a possibility of 36 excess teachers that Dr. Zerby said we had. Okay? That are in the budget. That's declining enrollment. People employed that you don't have to employ and excess capacity, okay? You're going to do these studies about rooms. Get to the starting number for the homeroom eligible rooms. Look at that number, okay? There's a great mental health program that we just instituted in our COLA. I'm all for it, okay? But they claim two rooms. They claim two rooms, okay? You need to get the starting number for homeroom eligible rooms right. You need to get everybody out of the rooms that stake the claim to a room because it's nice to have. And believe me, when those rooms are empty, they get occupied with somebody. And you should look at what the special ed requirements are. You really should. Because you're going to find the starting number of homeroom eligible rooms are low. You need to clean that number up and get it to where it should be, okay? Because when you save $25 million of debt payments and save a million dollars in operational, you could develop a student database program for test scores. And you can target students that are not proficient. You can move them to proficient with a good teacher collaboration on the kids that need help, okay? You can move proficient kids to advanced, okay? In the categories by tracking the kids that are having problems with certain standards, okay? You could put a nice with the money that you save, okay? You can get a better educational structure administratively to help the kids. You might get a better engineering program and things like that. You might even get an AP German class, okay? You can better the kids with saving the money. That's what it takes, is the money, okay? Those homeroom eligible rooms are low. You talk about your responses that you got, Ms. Reese, that don't close. There's a lot of people out there that don't know what's going on. There's no Times Herald, there's no Inquirer. Hank isn't here from Fox 29, okay? The taxpayers with no kids in this district don't know what's going on. We're here in a vacuum. They don't know.
Mr. Bickelman, I have to ask you to wrap up now.
Okay, do the math. Okay, do the math.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews.
John Andrews, Lower Providence. I feel a sense of disgust when I, I think that the public is being ignored. This evening, there could have easily been a, a one-page handout on the proposed schedule. Now, what would the cost be if a hundred copies and a few being left over? There's talk of zero-based budgeting, and there are lots of places where that's not done, and it's to the detriment of, of good budgeting. Budgeting is not just for money. You can do budgeting for the number of schools you need. You can do budgeting for how much education to provide, budgeting for how many backpacks you need. Here we are, early December. I don't think there's going to be a lot more information provided between now and the January work session, but, but there's someone who thinks that we can have a decision because, on the basis of emotion, apparently, a lot of decisions have been made or forced onto the minds of directors. I think before you consider renovation, because we have Skyview, a building that we didn't need, a building that we needed for sixty-five hundred students that didn't show up, we're now seventeen hundred students below that. Closing one school, Audubon, let's say five hundred students, we're still twelve hundred students in excess, unless something dramatic has changed, such as the number of special education students. But the public doesn't have that information because someone decided that we didn't need the data portfolio. Well, the data portfolio had a lot of useful information for the public, as well as for directors. And it was an annual, annual report. A school district with a purpose of educating, it, it's not sufficient just to have a financial report sent off to Harrisburg once a year, for many reasons. So I think that extreme effort ought to be given to do, can we close Arrowhead and still have a, an educational program as good as it is or better? And what would be the benefits? What would be the, the cons? And, and, you know, if, if that conclusively, on a factual basis, were to say, no, we can't afford closure, you know, then go on to renovation. I think a, a few years ago, in one of the major cities on the East Coast, I forget whether it was Wilmington or Baltimore, but the public school system was being utilized to like thirty or forty percent, because no one had the guts to do a closure. And not coincidentally, the education benefits of that school district to its students were atrocious. Here we are in a financial bind, and we're also in a bind for the timekeeper, cutting people off at four minutes, when there's big issues at stake, and, for instance, the public turned in comments, but.
Mr. Andrews.
Those comments are not broadly.
Mr. Andrews.
Propagated or summarized.
I'm going to have to ask you to stop. Your time is up. You're well aware of the board policy. It is not my doing, four minutes is four minutes.
I seem to remember when the policy was changed, you still had a three-minute rule that you had to be corrected on.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
And at one time.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
May I speak for a minute?
No, I'm sorry, your time is up.
At one time.
Mr. Andrews, please have a seat.
So there's a lack of courtesy on your part to the public, in my opinion.
I'm sorry, Mr. Andrews, I feel that there's a lack of courtesy on your part as well, so please have a seat. Thank you. Is there anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Dr. Zabertnik.
Jen Zabertnik, Lower Providence Township. First, I want to talk about the agenda with the timestamping. We all experience Power School and get a very quick, up-to-date notice when our kids' grades change. So there's technology out there that maybe something could happen with that along to agenda changes. Not that you don't have, you don't, shouldn't have to not be able to make changes, but they should be able to be notified if they are. So we know that's all out there because Power School keeps blowing up on my phone when my kids' grades get changed. I appreciate it, what Mrs. Larsonis said about the Thompson Study. That's how I know I came to meet Mr. Boardman, talking about the Thompson Study, so I do appreciate you bringing that up, and that I know that there were a lot of errors with that. In regards to alleviating the stress, I actually wanted to come tonight to talk about that. So I appreciated that comment by Mr. Navarette, because it's almost like Groundhog Day or PTSD I've lived through. I had a student in Arrowhead when we went through the first time, and Arrowhead was on the chopping block. I am one of the presidents of the home and school there, and every decision is like, well, I don't know what we can do because I don't know if we're going to be open next year. And that was three and a half years ago, and I'm reliving it again. I'm the, one of the presidents now, and we're talking about things, planning for next year, and I said, I don't know. We're back on the chopping block again. So I do appreciate you saying that there is stress out there. We all live it, all of us who live in Arrowhead and have kids there and who talk about it, it is extremely stressful. So I do appreciate you guys knowing that we just would like a decision of something or narrowing something down, so we can kind of move forward a little bit with some knowledge. Regarding Colonial School District was brought up. That is a school district that I grew up in. I would please implore you guys to look up their history. I don't know the years that it was. They prematurely closed multiple buildings with the promise that they would mothball them for five years, and they wouldn't do anything with them. They ended up selling them, three years in, and then they had an enrollment boom that they weren't anticipating, and they were in a lot of trouble. And in order to fix that, they had to incur more costs in the long term. So I, please, look at that and think about that when you are making your decisions. In regards to the Audubon property, I don't know what can be done with that, but if you guys do decide to renovate or rebuild, and the current students have to leave, I don't know if that's an option of going back there, that is an empty school building. I just want you guys to consider what will happen with the current staff and students. We would like to stay together as much as possible. I don't want us being split to Woodland, Eagleville, and Warsetor, so there is an empty school building. I don't know what would need to be done. I don't know, even know if that could be, but if that's maybe a possibility to keep us together during that, if that would go there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Any further comments from members of the board? I just wanted to address a couple of things quickly. I, I know that there's a lot of concerns about costs and what renovation and remodeling and all that would cost the district, but I, I want to reiterate that this is not just a financial issue, it's also an educational issue, and we have to address it from both of those perspectives and, and others as well. Many of the people that are saying that there is additional room and disputing our capacity numbers have not actually been in our schools in a number of years. So I don't think that it's fair to, to dispute the information that's being provided to us from the educators that are in our buildings every single day. And I, I understand that, you know, there would be a cost savings associated with closing of a school, and, and there are things that we could do with that money, absolutely. But I don't know how we could ask our teachers to begin to address educational issues with that additional money when they're also then responsible for additional students. So I just wanted to get those thoughts out there. I don't know if anybody else on the board has anything, or if we just want to take a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion? Mr. Winters? A second. Ms. Drummond? Meeting adjourned.